Good afternoon and welcome to the Senate Committee on Education. Today is Wednesday, February 8th at 3 o'clock PM. We are in hearing room 229. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the legislature's website. This Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include the 3 o'clock and 3:05 PM agenda for the Committee on Education. In the unlikely event that we must abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Friday, February 10, 2023, at 3 o'clock PM in this room 229. Any public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. I'd like to take this time to remind our testifiers that due to time restrictions on our hearings, we will be limiting testimony to one minute per testifier per bill. For people participating remotely, please remain muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. When I call your name, unmute yourself and your time will begin. After your minute is completed, staff will mute you so that we can move this hearing along in an orderly and efficient manner. Thank you. Thank you, members, for being here. And let us start with Senate Bill 1518 relating to the Department of Education. It provides procurement exemptions for the Department of Education for certain goods, services, and construction. Sunset, 6:30, 2026. To testify, Superintendent Kiyayashi, please.
Aloha, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, members of the committee, Kiyayashi, Superintendent, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. This measure will provide the department with the flexibility to procure educational materials most beneficial to students, educators, and schools in a more timely and less cumbersome manner. The department supports this measure with one recommended change, that Page 8, Line 18 of the bill be amended to replace the $100,000 figure with $100,000 for goods and services and $250,000 for construction. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Let's hear from State Procurement Officer Bonnie Kahakui.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Bonnie Kahakui, Acting Administrator, State Procurement Office. We stand on our written testimony in opposition to this bill and available for questions.
So can you tell us why you're opposed, please?
Yes, there's a couple of things. One thing is that we think that the code should be applied uniformly to all departments and not carve out a special exception for the DOE. It also would, if you leave the bill as is, the $25,000 or not give the exemption, it's, we believe that all vendors should be given an equal opportunity to compete for government contracts. With just three quotes, we believe that it's possible for the vendors, or I'm sorry, for the schools, to call the same three vendors over and over again, or maybe just pick one vendor over and over again. It is more transparent if you do it electronically. It prevents fraud and collusion and it prevents parcelling. It's very easy to parcel when you have, just need to go to three quotes. They feel that it might be easier to do three quotes rather than to do an electronic procurement. So we're proposing that this bill not be passed.
Thank you. Bonnie, what is the yearly average number of bids per solicitation for those posted on the Hawaii Eko?
It's in the hundreds. Currently, there is 179 bids out today. I don't know the exact number.
All the departments?
All the executive departments that use HYPRO.
And all the departments use HYPRO?
All the executive departments use HYPRO. We actually acquire it for our executive departments for $15,000 to less than $100 and for construction up to $250. So it's basically small purchase. In fact, the DOE also uses HYPRO for some of their goods and services.
Some, but not all?
No, I'm not, I'm not sure which ones they use for it, which ones they don't. I do know that they do use another electronic procurement system called HEPS, and I believe they use that mostly for their construction.
So what is the yearly number of solicitations that receive no bids on HYPRO?
I would have to get back with you. I just know that right now, we require all our departments, all executive departments to use it for small purchases over $15,000.
Members, any questions?
Bonnie, so is there any department that has any exemption or is everybody still under the same procurement?
Currently, the law says $25,000 or more that all departments, all agencies, all jurisdictions use an electronic procurement system. No one is, I don't know anybody that's asked for an exemption from that, and we've actually made it stricter on our staff.
Does UH also have that?
Yes, it's statutory.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, members?
The only reason why, for me, the question would be that, why wouldn't you feel or think that this would be necessary for DOE? I understand you saying everybody should be scheming, scheming across the line, but when it comes to, I'm not going to talk goods and services, but mostly on construction, yeah? Especially with repairs or anything that we do with the DOE. It's 1882 by the time we get to home and it's like, you know, we tried to find, I'm not saying that they should be exempt for a lot of stuff, but when it comes to certain things for the DOE, we left off yesterday, and construction costs, all kinds of costs just rises when it comes to, you know, because they take the state and the DOE into buckets. So when we delay certain things, it obviously takes a backseat. I'll give you an example. When it came to just bringing and retrofitting the portables, if, sorry, Heidi Armstrong, expediting certain things to get it done for Campbell High School's 40 portables that we have, it couldn't get done. So they always got to jump to all these hoops to construction. So, I mean, I'm just saying about DOE, I'm not talking about anybody else. Why wouldn't you, wouldn't you feel that it would be a benefit for DOE going into this direction?
Actually, I, I think it would actually be easier for them to use an electronic procurement system. Again, I'm not sure how, if it's HEPS or if they want to use HYPRO. We think HYPRO is very user-friendly. If you know how to fill in the boxes and you know the basics of procurement, it should be, it should be easy. The way it's written now, you need to get three quotes. So someone has to call, call these vendors, maybe three, maybe four, maybe five, call them up independently, make sure everyone has the same specs, wait for responses, make sure they, you know, respond in a timely manner. With our e-procurement system, it goes out to everybody simultaneously. You're not making phone calls and tracking, well, so-and-so didn't respond to me and so-and-so didn't respond to me. Goes out all simultaneously. You can ask questions on HYPRO, question-answer period. All the responses come in, come in. The buyers can't open the solicitation until it closes, and so they get all of it one time. I don't see how doing it manually is quicker. The rules are exactly the same. The mechanism to put out the solicitation is a little different. You know, we're going into the, to the electronic age, and now we're going backwards. We're telling principals and teachers, whomever, you got to do the paper route, call on the phone and get this information. Or I don't even know if anybody still has a fax machine, but, you know, fax them the information or email them information. Why would you go backwards, making it more paper burdensome as opposed to less?
Senator, but Bonnie, these are only for procurements for less than $100,000 and subject to not less than three quotes for procurements of $5,000 to less than $15,000 and not less than three written quotes for procurements of $15,000 to less than $100,000. And you still have exception to that?
I do, I do. The statute says, the statute says $25,000. So up to $100,000, maybe $100,000 is not lot in the realm of construction, but there are a lot of small vendors out there that would like to partake in government activities. And if they're not going to be given the opportunity to bid on it, then how is this fair and how is it transparent? The Senate last summer, maybe two summers ago, talked about transparency and equal opportunity, and we've just taken a step backwards. How would the DOE guarantee that not the same three vendors are going to be called or not the same vendor's going to get the business over and over and over again? And parcelling is a real issue for us in this. You know, portable bathrooms or, or any bathrooms, if it's, we can conceivably see that there could be a greater risk for parcelling going over your $250,000 limit. If you're going to paint a whole school or even certain buildings of that school, one is $200,000, another one is $100,000, another one's $50,000. Collectively, you've gone over your $250, but if they parcel it out, this job is under $200, that's job under $200, and that job is under $200.
So when we talk, Superintendent, please. So when we talk about quotes for procurements or goods, let's talk about goods. So if you wanted to buy gross of pencils for 257 schools and it costs you $100 per school, that's what, $25,000? So you'd have to go on here as it is now?
I think for a Senator, Chair, the, looking at goods, for example, we are very much in our high schools and are throughout K-12. We're looking at aligning our curriculum to provide our students authentic opportunities that will help connect them to industry, industry opportunities and real-life authentic learning. For that purpose, many of the equipment and such are above $25,000. And that, that price hasn't changed in some time. I know as a principal, if, in looking to purchase these kinds of equipment, for example, with healthcare, schools are looking to purchase a not-a-marge table, and that provides students in health real opportunities to engage in in diagnosis of different, different diseases and such and problems with the body. That is, that table is well over $25,000, but it definitely provides our students with opportunities to connect to, to industry. And so when we're looking at school level, looking at providing these kinds of equipments for students to be able to physician, raising that procurement threshold from $25,000 to $100,000 definitely helps to expedite that process.
So Superintendent, how does being able to purchase a $26,000 table by going on to an electronic version, by then just going to two people on the telephone?
Actually, I didn't hear the sentence.
So how does buying a $26,000 table, now that you want to bypass going on electronically? I mean, how does it make, what changes that warrants you to now be exempted?
Schools are, at that point, if the threshold were raised, it would allow schools in the, the, many different opportunities for them to purchase these types of equipment.
But they can still purchase it on the?
It does.
What's the problem that exists that you have to go up to $100,000? Maybe I should ask you that question.
It is very complex for the schools, and it does take an order of amount of time.
How much more time would it take to go on? We heard Bonnie say that it's simple. You know, you hit the boxes, two versus calling up people. They're not there, you got to leave a message, you got to get the message sent. How does it make it easier unless you decide to go to one person? You already know who you want to buy it from?
No, no, it, it, it does take time. It is not, for, in my experience, it is not that, it's not that quick.
What is not that quick?
It may take months to get things completed, in my experience.
Okay, what, what system do you use?
Currently, at the schools, we do, we do the, the, we do go out and secure the bids for the three, check that, not bids, the three quotes.
What system are you using? You're trying to access HEPS?
Oh, one second. Or ask Deputy Dr. Goro to...
You're saying, wait, wait, we're saying you have an experience. I want to know what you're experiencing.
So my experiences have been...
So what, what programs are you using that is taking so long?
When, when we go out and we're looking at purchasing these kinds of equipments, we do engage with our business managers to help that support us at the schools. Those are our complex area business managers. And so as there's many things going on at the schools at once, they help us to navigate the process to ensure that we're following all of the procedures.
What system are you using?
I don't know the exact name of the system, Senator, I'm sorry, I don't.
So there's only, there's what did you say?
HEPS and HYPRO.
HYPRO.
And maybe it's HEPS.
Okay, HEPS is for construction and HYPRO is for goods and services. So you folks use HYPRO. So how, how cumbersome is HYPRO compared to getting on the phone and trying to call people?
Is it okay, Senator, your phone?
Senator, Colonel.
I used to be GOE, so I'm really up on procurement. And I have a concern about, you know, slipping and sliding. Every department want to get exempt because, yeah, it is cumbersome, but that's the process, right? And if UH want to get exempted, I'm going to say no. So if I say yes to you, I have to say yes to them, and that's a problem. So share with me on why you should say yes.
Colonel Dr. Goro, Deputy Superintendent, thanks. I'll be on both sides of the table now. The DOE has some very specific procurements that are probably not for the rest of the executive branch. That's the first and foremost, right? They're buying different things, so...
So does UH.
Same, same with UH. So I see and understand and appreciate State Procurement Office's standards.
But a procurement code is for everything. I mean, there's no cookie cutter, I mean, right? It's for all.
It is for all. So when it's in construction and we're renovating, again, one building is fine. The reason why sometimes on the neighborhoods, especially when they go up for the procurement, they have hundreds of buildings, because we have 4,000 of them. Having the knowledge of a similar contractor on island or someone that did work at the UE on the same campus for consistency is important, as opposed to putting up the bid for three and get awarding a low bid for whoever it's going to be. There's a lot of inconsistency, so...
That also leads to parcelling and fraud.
True, and I don't disagree with State Procurement Office.
Because that's what the airport does, the airport bundles, the airports, you know, they get around the threshold by extending the contracts, and I've seen that happen at UH as well. And I don't know if it's happened at DOE, but...
It's a privilege that we would have to be very mindful of. And like I said, I appreciate the Chief Procurement Officer's concern for partially because we don't want that. So I think we need to work with this State Procurement Office to figure out how the uniqueness of a DOE campus and the uniqueness of making sure that the changes that we make are consistent, especially on the technology side. We just can't, it's unlike a state building when we're just renovating it. It's one-time and it's very concise. In this case, you have multiple campuses with, or multiple rooms and classrooms within the same campus, but not all jobs go on at the same time.
Which leads to bundling.
Yes, you're, you're right, you're right. And so we need, we need to have a process of check and balance. There's no question about that. But with regard to the goods and services, as I said, just coming back from my Papa High School, the principal has very unique procurement needs for health. And so it's unlike others, so having the latitude for a higher dollar amount and some exemption powers. I know we're diving into more autonomy that the DOE has currently, but I understand your concern.
Yeah, if I was looking for an expensive health table, one that the Superintendent, I would want to hear from a lot of different people to make sure that I get a competitive bid. I'd hate to go to just somebody that I know or two people, and all of a sudden I think, oh, yeah, that table is $25,000, $26,000. And then I find out, wow, there are other people that are willing to go to $23,000 or 20, you know? So you limit yourself. You know, I regularly go on eBay and Amazon before I buy anything anymore because I want to make sure that I'm getting the best price. If I call up people, they don't even want to give you prices over the phone anymore. They don't have time to answer the phone. You know, they tell you, go to our website. So I, I'm not comprehending how this will make it quicker, faster, more efficient, and, and prevent us from doing problems that we've had in the past, and we continue to have on bundling and on parcelling.
And that's the price that we have to assure the state and yourself and State Procurement Office. There are going to be vendors that provide that kind of technology that's very unique and is probably heating edge. And so the ability to be innovative and move quick.
Then don't you go to RFT if you want to be innovative and so forth?
You can. I guess in this case, it might be more of a sole source and justifying to SPOY this vendor. We do, we do, yeah.
So why aren't you using that ability instead of getting a blanket, blanket procurement exemption? Instead, everybody else want to get the same thing.
That is one of the tools in the arsenal that the UE can apply, absolutely.
Thank you. Bonnie, so what is the amount now that they have to go out for, or use the electronic system?
$25,000.
$25,000?
$25,000, yes.
Did it just say 10 before and we moved up or says 2? No, I thought we moved up to 25, no?
I don't recall that. I only remember 25, and as I said, the executive branch departments, we mandated that they go 15.
I'm sorry, mandating a judge?
Executive branch departments have to use HYPRO for goods and services over $15,000.
15.
15.
15, I thought you said 50.
No, 15.
Superintendent, you know, we recently passed a bill to since the, the schools have to provide menstrual products for your students.
Yes.
So what does that cost in terms of, this is an example set so that the committee members can understand, for 200, well, it wouldn't be 257 schools or would it be all schools that you're going to have to purchase these products?
It would be for all schools, Chair. Elementary school students, so we're looking at supporting them, sometimes as low as grade five.
So have you guys looked at what it's going to cost you to do that, to the basic menstrual products that you're going to need to do?
Let me check, Senator.
What I'm getting at is just, you know, what, what you guys are looking at and then how long it's going to take you guys to go out to do the bid on this and get it to the schools?
Can I ask Heidi Armstrong, please?
Right now, with the money that was appropriated with that bill, we, based on a formula for each school, the money was distributed to the school, and we limited purchase of only the products, not of dispensers, so that we can use this year and next year to establish what it's going to cost for each school. So we, we had an idea when we multiplied the number of products used times the number of days, times the number of girls or persons who are menstruating in the schools. That was our formula. Now we're giving it this year and next year to see if that formula is accurate or if adjustments need to be made. But we took the appropriated money and distributed it to the schools.
So I'm assuming then, in that case, most of the schools would, would be able to purchase their products for under $1.50,000?
Most of the schools, yes. Thank you.
One may I follow up? So, but isn't it cheaper if you buy it in bulk?
Yes.
It is, right? Because you buy toilet paper, you buy paper towels, all in bulk?
Yes.
And, right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but I guess, Senator, what I'm getting at is that if they don't distribute it to the schools, the schools will not get it in time if they're having to go through this, this process all the time. And I don't know if the schools have the capacity to store ahead of time.
No, that's why I'm saying that if they buy it in bulk, then they can distribute it to the schools whenever they have it and be cheaper than going to each school under $25,000, right?
But this is the case in favor of passing this bill.
Well, that's what I'm saying, why we don't need a bill? Because we're not going to toilet paper the same way.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, no further questions. Let's move on to next. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I have to let people testify. I actually don't have you on the list, but please come forward.
Thank you, Chair, and if you don't have it, I'll be sure and get it back to you.
Thank you.
I'm Tim Lyons with the Subcontractors Association, and we oppose this bill, at least that portion of it that relates to construction. Obviously, we have no problem with goods and services. But, you know, we think the procurement code was written so that everybody runs by the same rules. We don't like exemptions. We think that starts the process of doing that. So it's really a question of fairness. There are also a large number of small contractors that deal just in small contracts. And the reason they do that is because there's not a lot of complexity in staging the job. Their bonding requirements are a lot lower. Their employee commitment is a lot lower, and their payment oftentimes is a lot quicker because it is a smaller job. So we would object to taking those jobs out of the procurement code because some of our guys actually live on those. Thank you.
Members' questions? Thank you, Tim. Anyone else here to testify on this bill? If not, thank you, moving on. Senate Bill 943 relating to school-based health services appropriates funds to the Department of Education to fund school health support staff to sustain the Hawaii Keiki Healthy and Ready to Learn Program. To testify, Superintendent Kiyashi, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Mercado Kim, and members of the committee. I'm Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. And I would also like to add one additional comment that the positions funded through this measure would not, would complement the existing school health assistance and not replace them. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next to testify, Osatui Junior President, HSTA.
Hello, chairs and members. Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Osatui Junior President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. We stand on our written testimony, thank you, in support.
In support. Thank you, Laverne. Next to testify, Yuko Aricawa Cross, Director, Executive Office on Early Learning.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Jordina Farah, representing UE on behalf of Yuko. We stand on our written testimony in support of the measure and defer to the Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordina. Next to testify, Clementina Seria Ule, interim dean, University of Hawaii School of Nursing.
Good afternoon, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the committee. My name is Clementina Seria Ule. I'm the interim dean for the UH Atmanoa Nancy Atmasparawatt School of Nursing, or NOSAN. So thank you for the opportunity to present this testimony in strong support with proposed amendments for this measure. For this measure... for this measure, Senate Bill four ninety-three. And I would like to add that we are in full agreement that we should not duplicate services and commit to working together to ensure that schools have the health service coverage that they want and need. In addition, as the school health program initiative has grown, we have enjoyed partnering with federally qualified health centers or AFQHCs who are entering into the school health service delivery environment. We actively support the DOE in ensuring that the Hawaii Keke services are planned around, not over DOE contracted school-based clinics provided by the AFQHCs. The most important thing that we do not, that we do in our program is facilitate the connections for care by working with community partners over the years, which has tremendously grown. We have impacted students, schools, families, and communities. The real potential lies with our ability to collaborate, reconnect students to primary care providers and link students and families to appropriate community resources that are culturally accepted and easily accessible, such as the AFQHCs. Thank you.
Thank you. On Zoom, we have Laura Reichart for Hawaii State Center for Nursing.
Present.
She's here in person, popped out of the TV. Thank you. I think we have a late testimony on Zoom. Jalen Tashima, senior at Campbell High School. Is Jalen there?
Are you chairing? Not present on Zoom.
I'm sorry, did not hear you.
Not present on Zoom.
Thank you. We have three others, written testimony in support with comments. Members' questions? Questions? Heidi, please. So with this bill, will the school health assistants no longer be needed?
No, they, they will, they will absolutely be needed. And this position is meant to complement the, the work and the load of the school health assistants. But the school health assistant is still the permanent school position. We're requesting funding for these additional positions for the next two years. And we'll be looking at re-describing or a position description for them. They were initially brought on to support the schools during COVID with COVID reporting, COVID close contacts identification. And we'd like to continue their support, though their efforts have morphed from that type of work, but to helping the shaws in the health room, helping students with visits, making referrals to the Hawaii Keke Program. What these physicians cannot do that the shaws can do is administer medication.
So how many public schools is HPCA now serving? I'm sorry, how many public schools are they serving now?
We think we have a hundred and, a hundred and seventy of these positions.
And how many public schools will the Hawaii Keke Healthy and Ready to Learn Program serve?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you, we have a hundred and seventy of the Hawaii Keke support positions.
Okay, so what about the HPCA?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Jennifer. I'm the School Health Section Administrator. So I oversee those partnerships with the AFQHCs. HPCA is the umbrella organization. They don't actually provide direct services, but we do have cooperative agreements with four of the community health centers, and they provide services in eight of our schools.
Are these high schools or intermediate schools?
It's a combination of elementary, middle, and high schools. It really depends on the, the resources that the community health center has available and the needs of the school.
So are there overlapping services that both of these organizations are providing? Or are they working together?
Right, the, the goal is really to, to meet the health needs of all of our students. The, we want to continue to strengthen our partnerships with community health centers. They service our most vulnerable populations. But they do not have the capacity to provide services in all two hundred fifty-eight of our schools. So we've been really fortunate through the support of the legislature to have the Hawaii Keke Program to expand access to healthcare in our schools.
What happens in the case when there's disagreement between the two groups?
Um, that hasn't happened. But we do have as a process, for example, for students who receive nursing services under their IEP or 504 plan, and to have a student team to convene to discuss any kind of, I guess, disagreements on the kinds of services that are required for that child.
Okay, so there is a process in place?
Correct.
Thank you. Members' questions?
Senator Favela? What is the difference between the qualifications of the, isn't the, who right now, is it that health aid or CNA qualification? What is the qualifications on the two? What is the difference?
Thank you for asking that question, Senator Favela. At the school, the school health assistant must have GED, high school equivalency, and current certification in CPR or first aid. However, the school health support staff through the Hawaii Keke Program must also be certified as a medical assistant, a certified nurse aide, or a community health worker. So they have more specialized educational backgrounds in order to provide a greater range of health services.
So would that be in mind, are they going to be part of the, because isn't the health aide or whatever now, isn't they qualified in their, a union?
Um, that's correct, that the school health assistants are members of the HGEA Union.
So how is he going to work closely together? Is the other one going to join the union too, or be part of a union?
I'm not sure if the school health support staff are eligible to participate in a union. They're not technically state employees, but the school health assistants work very closely with the school health support staff. And so especially during COVID, they were overwhelmed with the amount of work to respond and prevent the impact. And, and now we see a continued desire for the more specialized health services. For example, a school health support staff can utilize telehealth in order to bring in an APRN for a health consultation for a student with more advanced needs.
Are you thinking on the working relationship that they have now is going to continue?
I think that, yes, the working relationship that they have now will continue. And I think that what's been really great about the Hawaii Keke Program is how responsive they have been to the changing needs of our schools.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So is anyone here from HPCA? No, please stay. Okay, so in their test.
Thank you. Not sure who to direct this question. Interesting conversation, but are rural schools, how does this apply there? And we're talking about hiring healthcare workers like they're readily available. And I know that that's not the case. So it's also my understanding that the mental health needs are much higher now coming out of COVID. But just because we put it on paper and fund it doesn't mean that we're going to be able to hire, hire these people. So what is the opinion or thoughts of that? Because I'm skeptical you're not going to find them.
Well, thank you for those questions. We're hoping to sustain existing personnel. We're not hiring any additional. And so these are already one hundred and seventy individuals working in support of our schools. And to address the remote or rural schools, they've been especially beneficial. Like I said, they can actually connect to more specialized healthcare. For example, we've been working with the Hawaii Keke Program to try to have a nurse on Molokai now for several years unsuccessfully. But they have been able to, to develop a support staff position there who can then consult with the APRN on Maui. Did I cover your, your questions?
I think so. If, if you have that, I'd like to see a list of those hundred and seventy where they are and what schools they actually attend to.
We can do that, and I can follow up with you. I'll let you know that. Um, to repeat the question?
No, no, that was.
Oh, sorry.
I don't remember where that came from either.
I just wanted to let you know that we can provide you the location where they're based, but actually the school health support staff are able to service more than one school in their region. And so that's been also really helpful in order to be flexible for our school health needs.
And, and to that point, you're based in one region. What schools in that region are they servicing?
We are organized at the complex level for our, our nursing support. And so, and then there's a complex area lead. And so the complex area lead would facilitate the coordination and distribution of staff as needed. You might want to ask more of those questions for the Hawaii Keke Program. They manage their personnel in response to our needs.
Okay. And I think we will, but I want to see where these people are actually going. Not just the region where they could be going.
Correct, yeah, yeah, I can provide you that list.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
We'll send you the list, Chair Kidani. Okay, I, I just wanted to ask you a question. According to the testimony from HPCA, and I'm sorry that no one is here to ask their own questions, but their concern is that this measure may unintentionally and inadvertently conflict with efforts to establish some base health clinics at certain public schools. Can you respond to that?
Yeah, we, we are not wanting to stop the expansion of our federally qualified health centers. They provide great services in, in our most needy areas. And so our, our, our work ahead is promoting the expansion of federally qualified health centers. But we know we won't have them serving every school in every area. And so to ensure we have proper health care for our kids while they're in school, we're partnering with the Hawaii Keke Program to fill in the gaps.
Okay, so who pays for the federally qualified health?
The federal government has identified the geographic region, right? The, and so the cooperative agreements that we have in place with the AFQHCs have no money exchanged. I want to clarify if I can and build on, on Heidi's response that the federally qualified centers serve as a medical care home. Those are the primary care providers. And through the Hawaii Keke Program, we have a constant referral process that when a student is uninsured or underinsured and needs more specialized care, that they may be referred back to their primary care home, which would be the AFQHC. So they're, they're kind of different scope, right? The, the AFQHCs are medical care home. Hawaii Keke is providing school-based health services. So we do not ever intend to replace the child or their family's medical care home.
Thank you for that explanation. Members, further questions? No, thank you. Okay. Moving along, Senate Bill ten forty-four relating to mental health appropriates monies to hire school-based youth, mental health specialists for Hawaii Department of Education schools. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Mercado Kim, and members of the committee. I'm Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure, and we thank you for the opportunity to testify. I would like to add that the appropriation of funds to increase the school-based youth mental health workforce would strengthen the department's efforts to meet the needs of students in Hawaii schools who, who are experiencing trauma, grief, family separation, depression, and other crises. So we, we welcome the intentions of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I did not see a dollar amount in the bill, though. Okay. So, no. We're just going to pull a number out of the air, or is there something?
We, we can, we'll submit to you a recommended appropriation. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom waiting to testify, Judith, Judith Clark?
Yes, I'm here. Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network. Teen Link Hawaii, a web-based statewide information and support resource for adolescents, reported twenty-nine thousand five hundred sixty website visits between April and September of two thousand twenty-two. Mental health and suicide were among the five most popular topics. We conduct evaluation for the AmeriCorps program in the Northern Mariana Islands, including a review of the reflection journals that are kept by the members who are high school seniors. We have seen a lot of comments in those journals around stress and mental health, and I want to share a couple of them with you. One member wrote, "There's just so many things going on with school and some things outside of school that made me feel so overwhelmed." Another shared what helped. "From time to time, I would also talk to some people about my mental health, and I am really glad that I have people to talk about it while feeling comfortable." These comments show why we need mental health workers in our schools. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Judith. Next to testify is Hannah Hayya Abad, individual.
Good afternoon, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Mercado Kim, and other committee members. My name is Dejana, and I am in support of Senate Bill ten forty-four. Aside from my own journey with mental health as a professional in the field of social work, I've seen the effects that trauma can have on individuals' well-being. And when I worked as a case manager, I saw the impact that abuse, bullying, separation from family, and moving, and even moving into a new home or school can have on a young person. I acknowledge that we already have counselors and professionals in the schools. However, Senate Bill ten forty-four is a step forward towards providing more access and more opportunities for children to seek support for their mental health. That said, please support Senate Bill ten forty-four and ensure the safety and well-being of the children here in Hawaii. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share my testimony.
Mahalo, thank you very much. Next to testify, Chris Caulfield, Chair, Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus. Is Chris there, please? IT, is Chris there?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. His testimony was in support. Next to testify, Leah de Los Santos, Youth Action Hawaii. Is Leah there?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
In support. Next, Richard Kanagusuku, individual.
Not present.
And finally, Erica Skyler Holokai, individual, in support.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Members, are there any questions of the testifiers? Heidi, please.
Heidi, what's the difference between a mental health specialist and a mental health therapist?
Currently, we, we have two physicians that, that provide mental health-type services to our students. We have our current VHS, our behavioral health specialists. We have three hundred and thirteen of those across the state who provide services to about eight thousand six hundred students. The services that- Um, that the services that they provide are intensive interventions, counseling sessions, crisis response, um, trauma response, they do mental health promotion activities and prevention activities. Um, these VHS staff are, um, either licensed mental health counselors, marriage and family therapists, or social workers, or they provide these services under the direct supervision of a licensed clinical psychologist. The second position that we have that does more intensive, um, serves students with more intensive needs are our educational psychologists. And, um, currently, we, we are partnering with Shaminad University to, um, put twenty, um, eligible applicants through this program, um, so that when they graduate, they can return to our schools and provide this higher level of mental health services to our students.
So this bill is calling for mental health specialists. So what category would this fall under?
In, um, in, 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 right, we, we want to increase the number of both. Um, depending on our biennial budget requests, the fund, if, if we aren't funded for our educational psychologists, we do need these positions. Um, it, it helps prevent us from, um, having to write, rely on residential placements for many of our students. Um, if we do, if, so, we need to fill those positions. Well, we have, um, we would like twenty.
How many vacancies do you have?
Twenty.
So you have twenty vacancies and you want twenty more?
I'm, I'm gonna ask Ida Bonilla, who leads this effort for us, um, in the department, um, to, to give the fine details.
Um, hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and committees of the, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify. Um, currently, we are hoping to establish the twenty educational psychologist positions. So we just, um, entered into that, um, collaboration with the University of Shaminad to establish a doctoral program in educational psychology. And so those folks will graduate from the program in two thousand twenty-five. And so the hope is that there's a cohort of twenty individuals, um, that will then enter into the DOE system, and they have all signed contracts to, um, dedicate three years at a minimum of service.
Do you have twenty in that class?
Twenty, yes.
All twenty signed?
Well, could you repeat that?
Twenty signed.
All twenty signed a contract, yes.
And so this is in addition to the vacancies?
Um, we currently do, um, I know a concern area for us is our vacancies in our school psychology, um, role group. And so we actually also just, um, worked on a collaboration with Shaminad to launch a school psychology homegirl program. Um, that first cohort will be for twenty individuals as well that we're recruiting from the public, um, through USDLE grant that, uh, the School-Based Behavioral Health Program received in two thousand twenty-one. We're able to fund tuition for that cohort, and those individuals will also sign a three-year commitment to the department. So those folks, hopefully, that graduating class will fill our current vacancies for the school psychologist position.
Classes graduating when?
Um, because of the internship situation, we can actually have that group working within our system in two years.
Okay, so let me see if I got this right. We have twenty vacancies, and those twenty in psychologists, um, working with Shaminad are the cohort, hopefully to have them ready in two years. And you want, you're asking in this bill for another twenty physicians? Is that correct? Twenty physicians to work with in conjunction again in the cohort with graduates coming out about two thousand twenty-five?
Uh, we currently have twenty-five vacancies for the school psychologists. That cohort would begin in fall of this year, um, to, and the hope is, right, that in the interim, we're recruiting folks to fill those positions.
You just told me you had twenty with a cohort starting in two years. You want twenty more, and then you're saying you have another twenty vacancies?
Um, the educational psychologist is not a position that currently exists within the department. We are asking to establish those.
Okay, so this bill asks for, what does this bill ask for?
This bill was, um, providing resources for the department to hire additional youth mental health providers.
Where did this fit in with what you just told us?
So if, if the legislature was to grant us monies, um, we would like to utilize those funding. Um, if we do not get the biennial request for the educational psychologist, um, if we don't get that request, we'd like to utilize any funding that you folks provide to support those positions that we would establish. Um, if we do get that biennial request, we do have a behavioral health specialist position, and we would welcome the opportunity to expand that program and offer additional positions for complex areas that have increased needs.
Still not getting my question answered. What are you asking for in this bill? What are you asking for?
We're, we're, we're asking for funding to increase the number of, um, personnel who are specialized in servicing our students with, um, mental health needs. And, uh, the, those positions include our behavioral health specialist positions, our VHSs, educational psychologists, which are in training now and will be available to us for hire in two thousand twenty-five, and then increasing the number of school psychologists.
So how many physicians is this altogether?
At a minimum, it would be twenty?
Twenty educational psychologists. And then ideally, we would like a behavioral health specialist in every school. Right now, um, our behavioral health specialists can serve multiple schools. So, um, we would have to put that number on paper, um, how many we have currently and how many more we need to service every school.
And, you know, I raise the same concern, uh, about, you have vacancies now. How are you gonna fill all these positions within the cohorts? How are you gonna fill them?
We're working very hard to partner with our, um, post-secondary institutions to create programs.
Each can't even fill theirs.
Um, I, I don't have the, the final answer for that, but I know that we seek every opportunity to partner with the institutions that do training for these positions, um, to, to make those trainings available to qualified personnel.
And you're talking about sums from fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Which to me seems very different. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on. It says, "The purpose of this act is to appropriate monies to hire school-based youth mental health specialists." Okay, so that's twenty. Is that what you're saying? That's a twin. I'm as confused as she is.
No, the, the twenty, they, they would not be school-based. These would be, they would service multiple schools. Um, based.
Yeah, that sounds like.
Yeah, okay, school-based would be.
Specialist for the state's public schools.
Okay, school-based would be our, um, behavioral health support, our behavior, BHS positions.
Okay. And that's one for each school. You're saying not twenty?
That's a different position, correct? And it, that's a different, the BHS is a different position from the educational psychologist.
I'm sorry, but this bill is. I need mental health right now. Anyway, so I, I need to clarify. I'm gonna be for this bill because I'm not understanding it. So please clarify, and we'll bring it back, but I need to, can you list all the positions you want? And how many of each, instead of saying to hire a school-based youth mental health specialist for the state's public schools with a blank appropriation, so. Yes, please. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, moving on. Senate Bill ten forty-five relating to career and technical education establishes a career and technical education working group to strengthen career and technical education in the state's public schools, makes an appropriation. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi.
Good afternoon, Senator Kidani, Vice, um, or Chair, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Mercado Kim, and members of the committee. I'm Heidi Armstrong, representing the Department of Education, and the department stands on its written testimony. But I'd also like to add that we are supportive of a CTE working group that could complement our existing efforts, which are described in our testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Also, Corey Rosenlee on Zoom. Corey, please.
Aloha, Chair Kidani, uh, members of the Senate Education Committee. I'm Corey Rosenlee, a teacher at Campbell High School. I'm here today to support SB one zero five. Uh, right now, in order to be a CTE concentrator, all you need is, uh, two credits in CTE. And this is not enough. Best country around the world in education is Finland. Best education in the United States is Massachusetts. Both of them allow their students to take half of all of their high school credits in CTE. The goal of this bill would be allowing all the parties, and that's going to be needed in order to accomplish it, to be able to come together to lay out a vision of how we can increase CTE credits in our high schools so that more of our students, when they graduated, when they graduate, will be prepared for highly skilled, high-paying jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. I believe that's all the testifiers we have. There were com- testimony with comments from Steven Schatz in support, I'm sorry, with comments for Hawaii P twenty, and Chris Caulfield, Chairperson of the Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus, also in support of this measure. Members, questions? Okay, so Heidi, we already have a working group, is that correct?
Uh, y- yes, we do, and I'd like to, um, um, call up Troy Suioka, who, who helps lead these working groups.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Troy Suioka. I am, uh, the CTE specialist for Hawaii Department of Education. So, uh, we do have, uh, pathway advisory councils that advise on each pathway, uh, CTE pathway for the department, and they're made up of industry, uh, partners, uh, post-secondary institutions, members from the department, and a secondary or post-secondary administrator. Uh, we are also working with the Hawaii Teachers Standards Board to convey, to con- uh, convene a work group to discuss, uh, CTE teacher licensure requirements, uh, for, to attract more, uh, CTE teachers within our schools.
So why do you need this measure? It's requesting an appropriation. You need an appropriation for what?
We, um, we can stand on our existing working group and our working group structure.
So you don't need this? Yeah, because this is calling to establish a working group, which you already have.
Yes.
I can't make up the signature of the introduce your bill. Did you guys ask for this bill? Oh, okay, you're off the mark. Yeah, so. Yeah, I'm not sure what still this is, but, um, yeah, unless, unless you guys needed an appropriation of something, I'm not sure what still wanted because you guys already have a working group. And I thank you for that. I think one of the things that we do need to look at when it comes to the CTE is that, um, and I think we have to work with the Teachers Licensing Board because right now you guys require all of your instructors to have degrees. And so painter or an auto body, and they will not have that degree, but they can sure teach the kids how to do the job. So I think that's what we need to work on.
Yeah, that's, so that's what we're working with, uh, HTSB on, creating that working group and getting, uh, uh, hopefully, a, a better licensure program, so.
Have they, they've been amenable to?
Yes, yes, yes. So we're currently working with them.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. Senate Bill one fifty-four relating to education requires the Department of Education to develop and implement a school meal subsidy program to provide school-level subsidies to children whose families do not otherwise qualify for free lunch under the federal Free and Reduced Price Lunch Program, subject to income eligibility rates funds. Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee, Colonel Togro, Deputy Superintendent. Department stands on its written testimony in support of the measure. We're here to answer any questions that should be have. Thank you.
Thank you. Osatui, HSTA President, Laverne.
Aloha, Chair and members. Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Osatui, Junior President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The Hawaii State Teachers Association supports Senate Bill one five four, and we stand on our written testimony. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Next to testify, Yoko Cross, Executive Office of Early Learning.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. We stand in support of our tests, uh, we stand on our testimony in support and defer to the Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, Dentry Bartolmas, Executive Administrator, State Council on Developmental Disabilities.
Hi, Chair. Chase Silver, the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Uh, we'd like to stand on our written testimony in support, but we just wanted to add that malnutrition has been directly linked to developmental delays as well as can cause long-term disabilities. So anything that kind of prevents this, we are in support of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, Nate Hicks for Hawaii Public Health Institute.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thanks for having me. Uh, yeah, Nate Hicks with Hawaii Public Health Institute. Uh, standing on our written testimony, but also wanted to just highlight, we offer public education for free to all students regardless of income. Uh, breakfast and lunch are a crucial part of being able to learn, and so making sure that these students also have the food necessary regardless of their family's income is also crucially important for the education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, Nicole Wu, Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Um, thank you for hearing this bill. I'll stand on our written testimony in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We have written comments and support from Chris Caulfield, Jordan Smith, testifying for Hawaii Hunger Action Network, Cheryl Lee, Michael Walker, and Hunter Piavolin. Members, questions for any of the testifiers?
Any.
Department?
So Kurt, what's the estimated cost of this program to the schools? And what is the level of income that will bring it into? That's not public knowledge.
Yep, thanks, thanks for the question. Um, today, it's a hundred twenty-five million today. Uh, the cost of food operation, and that's feeding approximately only half of the student base. Uh, we also have. We also have challenges when we do collect. Prior to the pandemic, non-collections was about 73,000. And then, of course, the pandemic hit, so the numbers went down to 33,000 and 23,000 in those two years. It is back up to 93,000, and that's only about, little under six months for the rest of the half of the year. So we know that in addition to that, Senator Kim, there are people that pay, that can't pay. So this bill, while it's great because it's going to identify the gap, needs a lot of analysis because that could be another 80,000, 84,000 students that are not getting a meal from the BOE today. We know that it was very popular during the pandemic with the federal aid. Meals were free, so we knew that people took advantage of that. But there's a financial impact to this, and there's also capacity issue to this. And so while the department is wholeheartedly in support of feeding all of our children nutritiously, I think we're going to need to do a lot more homework financially to give you that number. I'm not saying it's another 100 million, but if you just do straight math, if I'm feeding half of the students today, and it's costing us 125 million, it's going to be, that number, the cost of the state will be probably close to that again.
This bill doesn't call for everybody though, right? It still has some limitations or built-in that the BOE is supposed to come up?
There's a determination of a gap on what that income is. Yeah, and so that's what needs to be determined. It's not, it doesn't specify, right? And so where do we draw the line for those that qualify because of income? Where do we draw the line on that next increment up? Because we already know that those that don't qualify for any subsidies cannot pay as well. So that's what I mean. It's a number we can calculate. It's a matter of where we're going to draw that line, and we're not prepared to do that.
5% free lunch, though I don't know what that 5% is. And what that entails. So the cost of the school lunch, 125 million, is that, that's a subsidized amount?
That's the full amount.
So if we're calculating what it would cost to have breakfast and lunch when they're not in school, it'd be higher than what, if you had to pay your school lunch? It'd be a lot more, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So what is the cost for a child to buy school lunch or breakfast?
I think it's 250 per meal because it's subsidized. But most, you know, it's a kind of unique situation. Not all the kids eat. And when we went through the pandemic and all meals were free, we still served the same level, but it shifted to the more challenged, economically challenged communities, so the housing areas. So we saw that shift, but you know, the kids that can, or the families that can economically afford it, they weren't, you know, they weren't coming to school and they weren't eating the lunch. But those that needed, when we did grab and go and over that, that's the shift we saw. But what we are trying to figure out is what is that shift going to look like? And at what price point? So of the 100,000 meals we feed today, 20,000 is for breakfast, and the other 80,000 is for lunch. But where we want to go is, what the science is telling us is, if the kids eat breakfast, we're better off. But they're challenged by coming on to school on time and rushing to their class and things like that. So we're trying to figure that out. There's some dynamics that, since I've come aboard, we've kind of looked at it very differently, right?
How much of the lunches and breakfasts go into the waste?
It's not the entire lunch, but it's what's on that plate, right? So I went out to the Big Island at one of the schools, elementary schools, and they were throwing away all the oranges. So I go look at the trash can, obviously to see what we're dumping. But most of the fruit and vegetables were being dumped. Now, there's two reasons for that. One is they don't know how to, the mistake we were making, those oranges have to be peeled, those kids can't peel oranges. And this was a younger group, a K to six. And then vegetables, they just dump it. So two ways we're going to address that is, we got to look at the dressing, is what it comes for the salads. Maybe that's not what they like. So we've done a number of food testing. The oranges, we all slice them now. But we're trying to move to tangerines where the younger kids can peel it better. So that's some of the dynamics we're working with.
So have you checked recently as to what are being thrown away?
Yes, it's about the same thing. Milk, it's, so they have to take it, we have to offer. They take, and then some weren't drinking. So on the other side of the counting table is we have an ice bucket that they can replace it. So that's okay, that works for us.
It's just that we spend so much on healthy meals and trying to provide fruits and vegetables, and yet we provide it at a cost.
Yes.
And yet it gets thrown out. So I know growing up root for, I didn't know how they eat vegetables. My parents only fed me plant vegetables. Of course, I didn't like vegetables either. So yeah, I never ate vegetables. I don't know any kind of nutritious school meal served to me is going to change that.
Yeah, you know, and it's the federal standard. We have to put that on the plate. So for us to get the reimbursement, and there's multi-grain requirements, there's sugar requirements, there's salt requirements.
What's the federal reimbursement?
I'm sorry?
What is the federal reimbursement?
It's, I got to get the exact number, but it's pretty, pretty low. So recently. Yeah, well, the total money we get is 45 million. But the per meal expense or reimbursement is rather low. That has just gone up a little bit. Our congressional team in DC fought for the same reimbursement that Alaska gets at the minimum. We were behind, we were way below the deck. And you know, you know, our costs are higher. Recently, some of the products that we offer have risen 42%.
So if our, if the schools are serving these meals and the students are eating a model, are eating the nutrition plan, it just improves the testimonies from people to say how important it is for a child's learning that they have these nutritious meals, but they're not eating them, then what?
Yeah, so the challenge we have is how to make it more appetizing. And we're going through a lot of menu development and the variety. But that's something, we've done a number of different testing with different foods. We're looking to reintroduce salad bars, which will help the local product. We use a lot of local beef.
No matter what they do, the kids will not eat certain things. They want hot dogs, they want pizza, they want.
Pizzas, spaghetti is. I wouldn't leave the table until they finish that stuff, but that's not how the game's played now.
But it's just sad that those food are being wasted.
Yes. I tell my team, a successful food waste program is a failure in eating our kids. So we got to figure that out. It's a tough school. Thank you.
The pig's on the mistake is really happy about that. The problem is that at one time when Michelle Obama's standard, everything, whatever, whatever, they didn't have an opportunity as a state to up out of that program because we had a program that we already, at the time, the Bush and Reagan administration thought that we had a good nutritious meals for our kids, and then all of a sudden, we were doing Slim Fast and exercising on the TV, and everybody eating an apple. I worked at Campbell High School as a custodian, and I told you this already, Randy. When I did my own thing, 55 gallon, you guys know how big that is, right? All fruits. I did this one day, one day. Next day was a salad. A container to put a salad, container to put a tressi, is all on that plate. And Campbell High School had a little bit more wet milk inside the pan than usual, but they gave it in juice, milk, juice, salad, apple, and the entree.
Some of that stuff can be substituted so the juice maybe could fulfill some of the citrus requirements, you know.
I had asked them that the lady that was, the lady that was selling the food, and I asked them, why are you guys making them take everything? Because it's the law.
Federal requirement.
But then it's throwing them away, you know what I mean?
Hey members, we have 10 minutes, and we have another agenda after this one.
She's only talked one time. Sorry, 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 Miss.
But my question is, I would say I was done.
Sorry.
She was telling me I done.
I thought it pretty clear.
Oh, I love it. So you said 125 million dollars a day to serve, is that just lunch?
No, no, total operation on that per school year.
Okay, per year. Is that just for lunch or is that for breakfast?
Home meals that we serve.
For 50% of the students, that's, you say breakfast or?
Yes, breakfast and lunch. 45 million is the federal reimbursement.
Okay, so. But are you guys allowed to do any, like you said, the kids throw away vegetables, et cetera? You can't use something else besides?
Yeah, that's a tough one. I mean, taking stuff out of the rubbish cans.
No, no, it's made for the serve.
Yeah, we've got, we've got.
You know what they like, what they don't like. Why you keep serving what they don't like?
So, classic, yeah. Classic is, I go to schools and talk to the kids, exactly what you said. They like pizza, they like spaghetti. When we were doing COVID, when we had the problem with the Red Hill water, right? So we had to serve stuff that we didn't have to wash or minimum preparation, and was pizza. They loved pizza, but we get complaints from the parents, please do not feed my kids pizza five days a week. But the other stuff, you got to prep, right? So that's the tough part. It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a catch-22, you know. Unfortunately, what we have to do a better job is just food waste disposal and look at ways to recycle and work on that. That's what's going to be sad, but thank you.
Yes, you have the parents complaining, no apples and vegetables.
Pizza's good though.
Yeah, my grandsons, my grand. Okay, the last bill on this agenda is Senate Bill 156 relating to Board of Education. Requires the Board of Education to hold not less than six community forums annually. With at least one community forum at each, continue requires the board to include an open forum for public comments on non-agenda items. Requires report to the legislature on implementing open forums. To testify, Eric B.
Let's turn off the computers.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Cynthia Bartlett, Moms for Liberty.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I wanted to say that we're very grateful for that, but it indicates a problem when we just, we already have six meetings on the Board of Education policy, so that's already taken care of. But adding the open forum at the end is an excellent idea, and we're very happy about that. And we would, we would hope that an open agenda could be added in all BOE meetings. But I'm concerned about the report at the end. The bill says there'll be a report after all those community meetings. But how does that relate to action? Because for three years during COVID, this requirement of six meetings a year was just ignored, and we didn't, we didn't have any notifications going out to the parents at large. And we tried to meet with the BOE again and again and again. It took us a long time. It asking for that first community meeting to start with again. So we're wondering, with that kind of attitude, they sort of forget that parents are also stakeholders. And so how does this report help everyone in the end? That's just a comment I would like to find out about. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next to testify, Ryan Nicholas Luther. Thank you for waiting.
I actually wanted to do a comment on 15, 18, but I know it was already going so long. So just, yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board for hearing for me today. I strongly support SB 156. And I just wanted to state just a little bit more on that. I wrote a statement here, over the past few years, I've been to numerous board meetings. And definitely noticed how the times set by the board don't advocate for the ability for parents and guardians to make the meetings. That being said, the six community meetings that have been, you know, held, they were kind of pushed off because of COVID. So I don't really know when those will be activated again. But I do know the times that are set are very difficult. So with these six meetings, if we can maybe look into pushing them a little bit later in that day, you know, I know it's strenuous, everyone works very hard, and that would really help for parents to be able to voice their opinion. And then also, of course, with the open forums, the non-agenda items is a great thing because the agendas on these meetings are always set already by the department or other individuals. And that would be a great way to advocate for what the parents and guardians' intent is and what their needs are for the education system. And then just lastly, I would like to say that there's a development of a legislation committee that is taking the legislation intent for what the Education Department or department needs, which is, you know, which is great. But I would also like to say that these open reports, like the other testifier said, it'd be great to see what an end result would be with those summaries that are done. I've been a lot of town hall meetings and whatnot. And I do see just strategic planning has a lot of advocates and adding teachers into more of it and things like this. But an end result would be great to kind of see in this bill. So, and just one more thing with HB 630 being denied, which was another thing that helped the parents. This is a very strong bill that would help advocate for what the parents need in terms of their education system. Thank you again.
Thank you. And there are a number of comments from, there's, let's see, from Bill Arakaki Board of Ed, Cheryl Picard, OIP, and other members. We are going to move on right now. Were there any questions? Let's move on to the, do we have to go out in this meeting? Can we go right into the next agenda? The next agenda has one item. Senate Bill 531 relating to education authorizes the school facilities authority to appoint. Authorizes the school facilities authority to appoint an executive director and evaluate their performance annually. Okay, let's see. Do you have any testifiers? I don't have a list of testifiers, are there any? Oh, okay. All right, so we're going to recess. Convening the Committee on Education. Recommendation of the Chair for Senate Bill 1518 is to pass with amendments, reducing the Page 8, Section 5 to 50,000 instead of 100,000 for goods and services, and the 250,000 reducing to 125,000 for construction. Questions? Okay, so 1518 to pass with amendments, Chair Wutzai.
Chair Wutzai on Senate Bill 1518 with amendments. Vice Chair votes with reservations, Senator Kaluha.
Hi.
Senator Richards.
With reservation.
Senator Favilla.
Hi. With five members present, recommendations adopted.
Thank you for Senate Bill 943. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass as is relating to school-based health services. Chair Wutzai.
Chair Wutzai, Senate Bill 943 as is. Vice Chair, is there any members voting with regulation? Any members voting in opposition hearing now? Five members present, all voting with support, recommendations adopted.
For Senate Bill 1044 relating to mental health, we're going to defer this to the 215, 2023 education hearing, 3:00 PM on February 15, 23. Senate Bill 1045, recommendation of the Chair is to defer the bill. Senate Bill 154, recommendation of the Chair, this is relating to education. Recommendation of the Chair, this is relating to education and the school meal subsidy program. Recommendation is to pass. Senate Bill 154, but defect the date to 7/1/2050. Chair.
Your vote's aye?
Yeah.
Any members voting in opposition? Any members with reservations hearing now? Five ayes, recommendations adopted.
Senate Bill 156 relating to the Board of Education, same recommendation to pass as is, but defect the date to 7/1/2050. Chair votes aye.
Any members with, voting with reservation, any members voting opposition hearing now? Five members, recommendations adopted.
And for the second agenda, Senate Bill 531 relating to education and the school facilities authority. Recommendation is to adopt the proposed SD-1 and insert its contents into the measure and recommitting the measure back to the education committee. Do I need to give a date of various?
No.
Okay.
Okay, any members voting in opposition? Any members with reservations hearing now? All members vote aye.
Thank you.